So before, good evening, everyone. Before we do roll call, we actually have just a greeting from some students at Sand School to kick us off today.
Okay, thank you. That is actually inspiring. So with that, we need to take the roll.
Frank Solling.
Here.
Tiffany Dando.
Here.
Karen Taylor.
Present.
Julio Flores.
Here.
Juanne Lanzet.
Here.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
Aisha Clark.
Here.
Auntie Rowley.
We have to go.
Thank you so much. All right. So as customary, I'm going to just read our opening statement. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order February 19th, 2019, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our TV, television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you're here to join us to celebrate an achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted, had been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts the business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you've taken the time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system, and we thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Flores, read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la junta de educación de Hartford ha llamado orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 19 de febrero de 2019. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen y se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como junta de educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar. Es un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencien sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you so much. The public comment statement. Ms. Taylor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, as a board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take down your information. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Nosotros, la junta de educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
First, we have Tekeisha Williams.
Please hit the button on the microphone.
Hello? Good evening. I am here to discuss the ongoing issue with Ms. Wakefield's fifth-grade class at Rosson Elementary School. I am a concerned parent, and I am trying to obtain resolution not only for myself but other parents and my son's class. It is my understanding that Ms. Wakefield has not returned to the classroom since the Christmas break. Over the past two months, my son has multiple certified substitute teachers. His class has been divided up, and he has been sent to other fifth-grade classrooms. My main issue is that my son has not received his report card for the past semester, nor has he brought home any homework for the past two months. There is no homework for me to review with him. I have no idea what he is being taught in the classroom, what are the expectations for promotion. I have spoken with the school and the Board of Education and have been told that fifth graders will be taking assessment examination. I am sure that the test will want to see if my child is reading at grade level and can comprehend what he is reading. I would like, I would think that the test will also want to assess his ability to do mathematics. How can my son and his classmates be tested on material that they may not have been exposed to in the past two months? I am very truly concerned. I don't want June to come and then my son will be penalized that he has not reached his grade level and will either be held back or forced to attend summer school. My son education is my priority. I am requesting that the school provide all the parents in my son's class information on what is being taught and what the curriculum is for the remainder of the school year. We need to see a report card, weekly progress reports, so we can monitor our children's performance, and homework needs to be sent home either daily or weekly. The parents need to know what their child are doing on a daily basis. Thank you for listening to my concern.
Thank you. Bianca Pink Nina Rain.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Bianca Pink Nina Rain, and I am a parent that has a student at Montessori, a magnet now at Batch Elder. I've come before you last year and raised concerns about the grades of the students and how they're performing on their tests. So... So for the 2016-2017 year in reading, there were only 26 students that were proficient. That means reading at the grade level. And for the 2017-18 school year, only 33 students were proficient, which was a seven percent, or a plus-seven increase, but that's still not satisfactory. As I go over and I look at the mathematics for 2016-17, only 14 students were proficient. And for the 2017-18 in mathematics, there was only 20 students proficient. Again, an increase of six, but this is still not acceptable, and we need to do more. The lady that came up before me talked about the students at Rosson and how they're not receiving their homework. And as I look at their scores for Rosson, only for reference, for 2016-17, only 39 percent of the students were proficient in reading, and 2017-18, 37 students were proficient. A negative-two percent loss. And in mathematics, for the same school, 2016-17, 22 percent were proficient, and in mathematics, 28 students were proficient. We can do better, so I'm here to say that we can do better. Parents are willing, teachers are willing. We have to get on the same page so that we can help our students achieve at their maximum potential, and I know everyone here wants that. I'm just encouraging that we do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, Sandyanni.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well this evening. I'm Hiya Sandyanni, a resident. I'm here to thank you all for supporting the location of the Boys and Girls Club for the southern part of Hartford. It was the right thing to do, and I know that our kids will thank you, and we're here to thank you for them because we know there's a big gap and need for this kind of thing in the deep south of Hartford. So I have some concern. So I'm here to challenge you all, Board member, to take maybe about a half an hour and walk into Hartford High, whether you do it one, two times for the month, or whatever it is matter. I do want you to walk into Hartford High and see what I see every day, okay? We talk about absentee. Why is our absentito high in Hartford High? Well, because the kids come in the building, but they do not go to class. They're all over the building. They're all hiding somewhere or just hang out. Honey, why are you in the hall? Miss, I don't like my class. Miss, I'm not supposed to be in class. Those are kind of the attitude that you have and hear from these kids. Now, you know, when you have a school, you need to have strong leadership. Leadership is so critical. If you don't have a good leader in a building, it doesn't matter where, don't expect to get a lot of good things coming out of that building, okay? And so, Superintendent, Board member, I'm asking you, please, look and see what goes on at Hartford High, all right? Your absence is not because the kids are not in the building. They are in the building. Just nobody registers to them because they don't go to those classes to get registered. It's really important for you guys to do that, okay? You all know until you get there and see what's not happening, all right? It's really important. The grades, we need to do something policy-wise. We have to change that. I know when we had a farmer superintendent, he came in and changed those things because having those kids walk across that platform every graduation, doesn't matter whether they can read or not, they don't even have to show up to school for a whole month. And yet, they can walk across and they are graduated. And these are the kids we're sending out in the world to be our future, to take care of us in the future. We have to do something about that, all right? It's equal. We need to get all our little children. Look at the beautiful drawing out there, music. We need to get our kids back into doing those things. That's what school is all about. And if we can't get it there, then we will continue to turn the wheels and we'll get the result. You ever heard they say, "What you put in is what you get out"? It's really important for us to see what's happening in our school, all right? These kids want to learn, but they need the chance. We need to give them that chance to do that. So again, have yourself a good, good night.
Thank you. Amelia Rojas.
Hola. Mi nombre es Amelia Rojas, y tengo tres hijos en el sistema escolar de Hartford. Estoy aquí con Madres Guerreras de Make the Road Connecticut. Somos un grupo de padres latinos que queremos una mejor educación para nuestros hijos y más respeto para los padres.
Hi, my name is Amelia Rojas, and I have three kids in the Hartford school system. I am here with Madres Guerreras from Make the Road Connecticut. We are a group of Latina parents who want a better education for our kids and more respect for our parents.
Todos hemos tenido experiencias diferentes con el sistema escolar, pero nuestro grupo quiere asegurarse de que Hartford invierta en nuestros estudiantes porque merecen una educación de calidad, al igual que los niños en West Hartford y las ciudades vecinas.
We all have different experiences with the school system, but our group wants to make sure that Hartford invests in our students because they deserve a quality education, just like the kids in West Hartford and surrounding towns.
Queremos asegurarnos de que nuestros estudiantes tengan maestros certificados, ayuda académica adicional, programas después de clases, y muchas otras cosas. También queremos asegurarnos de que los padres puedan apoyar la educación de sus hijos. Esto significa que las escuelas brindan interpretación, actualizaciones sobre los alumnos, y talleres sobre el sistema escolar para los padres.
We want to make sure that our students have certified teachers, extra academic help, after-school programs, and many other things. We also want to make sure that parents can support their children's education. This means that the schools providing interpretation, updates on how the students are doing, and workshops on the school system to parents.
Queremos poder en el proceso de tomar decisiones sobre pólizas que afectan a nuestros niños en nuestra ciudad. Solo estamos pidiendo nuestros derechos como padres. Gracias.
We want power in the decision-making process on policies that affect our kids in our city. We are just asking for our rights as parents.
Thank you. Perla Villas.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Perla Villascas, y tengo tres hijos en el sistema escolar de Hartford. También formo parte de Madres Guerreras. Nos reunimos para aprender sobre el sistema escolar de Hartford para poder apoyar a nuestros niños y abogar por nuestros mismos.
Good afternoon. My name is Perla Villascas, and I have three kids in the Hartford school system. I am also part of the Madres Guerreras. We meet to learn about the Hartford school system so we can support our children and advocate for ourselves.
La razón por la que me uní al grupo fue porque tuve muchos problemas en la escuela de mis hijos. Mi hijo va a Burl Latinos, Students Academy, y él es autista. Me ha costado mucho lograr que la escuela siga su IP y le brinde sus servicios que necesita.
The reason I joined the group was because I have had many problems at my children's schools. My middle child goes to Burns Latino Studies Academy, and he is autistic. I have had a very hard time getting the school to follow his IP and give him the services he needs.
Cuando comenzó el año escolar, lo asignaron a un nuevo maestro y no se me notificó. Me llamaban para que lo recogiera al menos una vez a la semana. Su plan para ayudarlo era siempre, siempre llamarme. Luego, cuando finalmente se estaba acostumbrando a su maestra, ella se fue. La última vez que hablé con su, en un espacio como este, el director de la escuela me regañó y me dijo que no era verdad. Dijo que la escuela tenía muchos recursos y programas y que me estaban ayudando. Dijo que mi problema era independiente. Después de entonces, no he recibido el PPT que pedía hace casi un mes. Estoy aquí porque no quiero que lo, que lo que me está pasando a mi hijo y a mí le pase a otros padres. Todos queremos que nuestros hijos tengan éxito en la vida, y esto comienza con su educación. Queremos que el Distrito Escolar de Hartford apoya a todos los maestros, padres, y estudiantes. Gracias, y que pasen buenas tardes.
So when the school year started, my son was placed with a new teacher, and I was not notified. I was getting called to pick him up at least once a week. Their plan for helping him was always to call me. Then, when he was finally getting used to his teacher, she left. The last time I spoke out in a place like this, the principal at the school scolded me and told me what I said wasn't true. He said that the school had many resources and programs. He said that my problem was independent. Since then, I have not gotten a PPT for almost a month. I'm here because I don't want what is happening to my child and I to happen to other parents. We all want our kids to be successful in life, and this starts with our education. We want the Hartford School District to support all teachers, parents, and students.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Downs.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. I live in 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. The first thing I want to address is the fact that one of our members was unfairly terminated. And the position we take as a union is that the termination was unfair, no matter what other people may think about it. And this individual happened to work for the Hartford Board of Education as a substitute teacher for nearly 40 years, and then is terminated with no recompense. This just invites a lawsuit. And being a citizen of the city, I don't like lawsuits. They cost us money, but there is one coming. And so, we have to avoid these in the future. There's better ways of handling labor problems than termination like this. Also, I noticed that the part of the property that was used by our school is now going to be used for the Boys, New Boys and Girls Club, which is a good thing. I've had some, I had an opportunity to work with the Boys and Girls Club as a recreation assistant for the Hartford Recreation Department. And they were very nice to work with, very easy to work with. But I also want to know what happened to the idea or the Hartford Recreation Department working with the Hartford Public Schools. It used to happen, they used to be, every school used to have, in 1933 anyway, every school had a Hartford Recreation Department working in their facility, in the gym, and in the classrooms, and after-school programs. And somehow, this has just disappeared. There are many people still working with the Recreation Department that aren't working. So it just seems that the schools that are associated with the Boys and Girls Club is all right, but of course, you're using non-union members to replace union members. And of course, the Recreation Departments will know that they have a lot of union members that are now not working. So, and there's a lot of schools that need recreation, so that is something that the Board of Education and Central Office should look into, and also the Recreation Department, the city of Hartford, is still active, so they should also get involved. Now, also, it's true that there are students in our high schools that wander the hallways, not all high schools, but some of the high schools, and they're not interested in school. And it came to my attention that one of the reasons kids aren't interested in school is because we don't offer courses that they're interested in. If we say, "Well, we're going to prepare everybody for college," well, not everybody wants to go to college. And we might, that's a reason for us to look into these other programs that we eliminated to save money. So we have money, we saved it, so now we should take all this money that we saved and start bringing back vocational technical education, family consumer science education, and culinary education. There's plenty of money around. I was talking to the mayor the other day, and he indicated, or I indicated to him, I said, "Well, all the savings, the Hartford Board of Education, that there should be plenty of money around." And so therefore, somebody is stealing the money. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. Okay, just moving down. All right. So we are now at section three of the agenda, and so we are going to get into our annual organizational meeting. And before I do that, I don't, some of you may or may not know that I am not seeking a third term as chair, so I just wanted to thank everyone for the support that I was given over the past two years. I appreciate it so much. It's been an honor to serve as chairman for the past two years, and I just want to thank the Honorable Sharon Patterson Stoll for being a very good example of what a board member should be. And for those who don't know, this is my mother, and she served on the board first. I just want to thank Martha Bentham, Richard Waring, Tiffany Glanville for a lot of your support, Julio Flores, Karen Taylor, as you guys have been a wonderful leadership team. Madam Superintendent, it's been an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to work with you, and I'm continuing to... And I'm continuing to work, so I don't want to get too far into that. But I also just want to thank Dr. Montos. There you are. Thank you so much. Cologne, Dr. Cologne Rivas, thank you for all the things you guys have taught me. It's been a serious learning experience. I appreciate it so much. And with that said, I'm just going to read this process and read it out. The Board of Education conducts its annual organizational meeting every February. This process is when officers are elected and we use a paper ballot to elect each member. So that's these colored papers that you're going to see here. The nomination will be made. The candidate's name will be listed on a ballot and each member will sign it. Ms. Santiago will collect the papers and inform us of other results. After that, Ms. Wild, who I did not think... I don't know where she is. Oh, there she is. And Ms. Wild keeps me out of a lot of trouble, so I just want to say thank you to her. Ms. Wild from Corporation Council will come in and proceed the oath of office. And so with that said, the first office up is board chair. And I get the distinct honor of nominating someone who I consider a friend. And I appreciate him and he's been a very calming and soothing presence for me. So with that, it's my honor to nominate Mr. Julio Flores as chairman of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm used to giving. Are there any other nominations for chair?
Motion to close nominations.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So move all nominations to close. Hearing none. Please cast your votes.
Julio Flores unanimously is the vote for the board chair. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just for the record, I would say Mr. Julio Flores was unanimous vote. Congratulations, Julio Flores. The chair electors would prefer to continue with the nominations and elections and then we will change places if you don't mind. So please bear with me. For board vice chair, I'll now take nominations for the office of board vice chair. The nominations are made. Is there a... Madam Glan... Ms. Glanville?
I would like to nominate Juan Hernandez.
Second. Oh, I don't think you had a second. That's all right. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And now we are voting for a vice chair.
Juan Hernandez has unanimously elected as vice chair, elected as vice chair of the board.
That's awesome. All right, and moving on. Second vice chair. I'll now take nominations for the office of board second vice chair.
I... Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, I got excited. I would like to nominate Kimberly Oliver, a very capable, intelligent colleague. I'd love to be able to pass the baton on to her as second vice chair, knowing that she's going to serve our students well.
Are there any other nominations for a second vice chair?
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair.
I was getting ready to say that. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Thank you.
Kimberly Oliver unanimously is elected to the office of second vice chair.
And finally, board secretary, this is where I started out. And now we're going to take nomination for the office of board secretary. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Ayesha Clark for secretary of the Board of Education.
Are there any additional nominations? No, hearing none. Is there a motion to close nomination?
So moved.
The move is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. And please cast your votes for board secretary.
Ayesha Clark unanimously is elected to the office of secretary.
And so again, Ms. Wild will come and swear them all in. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate all the support. And Ms. Wild.
I do. And Mr. Chair, or now Mr. Flores, can I have a point of personal privilege for thirty seconds?
Oh, yes, Mr. Hernandez.
So I just wanted to just thank... Not that he's going anywhere, right? Like he's just moving down a little bit. I did want to thank Mr. Stallings and Ms. Glanville and Ms. Taylor for their leadership. It's... To be completely honest, when you said two years, I blinked. I thought it was one year. You made two years feel like one year. Thank you. It was actually... That means it was a good time. It was... So I appreciate that. But you actually, you all led us with the superintendent, led us through one of the most hardest things that this district has had to do in I don't know how long. So just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we earn our salaries, don't we? We... No, I'm just joking. We don't get paid, folks. But I appreciate the work that you do because it is... It's not easy. So I just wanted to thank you three and good luck, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to point that out there. So thank you, guys.
All right, now we move on to reports. Do you have a report, Mr. Stallings? No. Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. We are actually going to start with celebrating student talent, the amazing student talent that we have as part of my report. I'm going to ask Ms. Tracy Avicoli to join us as we acknowledge arts tonight. And I want to express deep gratitude for the staff that is here, the teachers, the administrators, and most importantly, gratitude to our students and their parents. Because as you know, today is a day off for students, yet they are here as we celebrate them. So congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Tracy Avicoli. I'm the Director of Arts and Wellness for Hartford Public Schools. I'm very honored to be here tonight with the invite from Dr. Torres Rodriguez and the Board of Education honoring some very special students who have been selected to have their artwork featured on the superintendent's greeting cards. So every year, this is a contest that our students participate in. Every student in the entire district is... Has the opportunity to participate with the help of their art teacher at their school. Usually, we have it be themed based on the seasons of the year, but this year, it was more open-ended. And all of the kids were able to submit something that they just really thought was special and creative. And we really received some beautiful, creative, expressive artwork. So I'm here to acknowledge all the students. Some of them aren't here because it's not a school day. We do have some teachers here that are willing to come up also. And if neither are here, I will send those over to the schools. All right, so I'm going to start. I'm going to have them all come up and actually be able to shake all of your hands, if that's all right. Is that okay? It's like the Oscars a little bit. Yeah. Yes, and you all have a little gift. All right, so our first student is Hawthorne McCabe. He's a kindergartner and he is not here. But his artwork is up on the screen. Next is Dyson Almonte. Dyson, come on up. You've been waiting all night. Next is Bouvana Aretti from Breakthrough North. Her teacher is Betsy Carne. Bouvana Bouvana. Congratulations. Next is Evelyn Mendez from Bolizzi. She is not here, so her teacher, Stephen Costa, is going to accept her reward on her behalf. Next is Dianeek Drummond from Rossin School. Dianeek also isn't here, but her teacher, Meg Hayes from Rossin, is here. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Next is Erin Lactuhaman. Lactuh... Lactuhuman. Is that... Did I get it right? Nah, Erin. Next is China Merson from Kinsella. China's not here, but I will accept it on her behalf and send it to her school. That one says hope. Next is Nevea Martinez. Can Nevea's parents... Nevea, you can take pictures if you want to. You wanted to take a picture? Come on up. Next is Olivia Eubanks from Renshulli Academy. At the end... Do you want to do it now? An individual one, and then we'll do all of them. Next is Nayeli Cuba Obies. I don't think she's here, and her teacher also is not here, from Buckley. Next is Destiny Lucrey from Classical. Yeah. We have some talented students in our district. Destiny also is not here, and neither is her teacher. And lastly, is Jasmine Lawl from Buckley High School. All, right, all of them? Okay, sure. All this?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am being told to tell you all that I got into my early decision college, which was College of the Holy Cross. And not only did I, thank you. Not only did I get accepted, but I wouldn't have been able to afford it because it costs $60,000 a year, but thankfully, I got a full ride.
If all of the, all of the students and parents can come all up to the stage, we're gonna take one group photo, and then if parents and teachers and students did not get an individual photo with the board of ed, you can stay and take an individual photo as well.
Thank you, everyone. I will now continue with my report. And just to remind everyone that my report is going to be available electronic along, electronically, along with all the other reports of each of the board committees. An update on college and career readiness. In an effort to improve our systems, protocols, and implementation of research-based practices, we are partnering with University of Hartford, and our goal is to increase supports to, of course, the New Weaver, Hartford Public High School, and Buckley High School. A new advanced manufacturing program with Goodwin College for dual enrollment has been established. The pilot will launch in March, and then we will have additional programming in the fall for Buckley and Weaver. Also, initial conversations have taken place with Capital Community College to articulate math college courses in order to provide additional opportunities for our students to receive dual enrollment credits. Update in terms of our data. We have deepened our collaboration with the RISE Group. We are in the process of developing a new suite of dashboards for schools to monitor students that are on track for graduation based on graduation plans, courses taken, and credit types. The, our team is gonna get an opportunity to really go deep into these new dashboards at the RISE convening in Boston next, next month, and the release is for May for the dashboards to be available to everyone. Our executive DataWise team engaged in its first virtual coaching session with Hartford in preparation for the next steps of the work. As you all know, we have, we're doing extensive work around the DataWise process to implement our major actions of close reading and guided reading. The next set of district-wide days are in March and in April. And lastly, we had professional development that was provided to 25, 24 out of the 25 middle high school scheduling teams to establish district expectations for master scheduling with the goal of having more efficient and effective schedules for students for the upcoming school year. With regard to our professional development for our district leaders, the Administrator Institute was held at the, in partnership with the Wathwords Ethnium and the Connecticut Center for School Change, given our focus on uncovering and addressing the systemic inequities and disparities that impact our students' learning and achievement. And the aim of this learning session and the coming learning sessions is to identify and implement strategies that address our systemic root causes of inequity and the gaps that exist, not only in our student achievement data, but in other of our student outcome and indicators. During the institute, the administrators used art to engage in courageous conversations around bias and race, and they also analyzed disaggregated chronic absenteeism data and identified specific data points on chronic absenteeism to develop specific action plans. This work is going to continue with the Center for School Change. I have launched the superintendent's teacher and the administrator advisory groups. As you all know, I do have advisory groups from our higher ed, community-based organizations, faith-based, faith-based leaders advisory group, and so the teachers and the administrators' groups have a purpose, and that is to share information, data, and district projects connected to the DME and allow for feedback. We have a set of norms that allow for collegial conversations, not related to bargaining contracts or HR-related concerns. This is another opportunity to give voice to those who are in our schools, engaging every single day with our students and their families. These meetings are going to continue on a quarterly basis. Chronic absenteeism updates. On the 22nd of January, our team attended the Peer Learning Committee at the State Department of Education to learn about effective strategies that other districts are using to address chronic absenteeism. In relation to that, our partnership with Attendance Works continues, and on January 30th, the Laura Downs from Attendance Works met with our district attendance team to support our plan to address chronic absenteeism at the district level. We reviewed and monitored the district attendance plan to make sure that we remain focused on the work. And we also launched the professional learning communities for six schools that we are targeting to do deep work around chronic absenteeism. The schools are Burns, Sand, Burr, Buckley, Hartford High, and Parkville. I want to acknowledge some of the work that is being done by our Department of Food and Nutrition Services. The department works very closely with NOX, a nonprofit organization that uses agriculture as a catalyst for community engagement, and they've actually begun the discussions for our produce needs for, for next school year, and they've also participated in the Connecticut Department of Agriculture Farm to School Symposium, and they co-presented with our team and our partners at NOX. The developer, the department also hosted the supper events at each of the family information nights for the schools that are going to be going through their transition next year, Milner, Wish, and Sand. I want to inform everyone of some significant changes with regard to transportation. Communication has gone out to our families. On November, the State Department of Education, Education Division, and the Regional School Choice Office notified magnet operators of their intent to align the magnet school bell times for schools in the Chef Region that are part of the regional transportation system. The change in bell times was precipitated based on the findings of a two-year study of the Regional School Choice Office Magnet Transportation Services. And basically, there are going to be changes. This State Department of Education proposed bell time changes that impact Hartford's transportation services for all of our schools. And we were initially working to go from a three-tier to a two-tier system, and working very diligently, our team was, to identify cost savings. However, due to the changes from the state, we, we are going to have to keep the original system of three tiers that we had. We are communicating, we've communicated the, the information to our families. Of the 16 magnet schools with the new bell times, 12 schools, the start times are changed by about 25 minutes, so we'll be monitoring the impact on our families for next year. Lastly, the Operations Department is working diligently to work on bus and monitor consolidations, again, in our efforts to identify efficiencies. Door-to-door buses are required to stop at all stops, whether students are riding the bus or not, and as the school year moves along, some of our students change schools, move, or, you know, move out of town even. And so this information does not always make it back to us, to our transportation office, and so the team is working diligently to update all of those data points. I want to highlight the athletic directors who also have been leveraging data. They met with our data team to identify student athletes in Power School. As you know, Power School is our student information management system, data management system, and so they viewed attendance and academic performance in Power School for all of our students, and the athletics and the data team met with high school athletic faculty managers to discuss ways to aggregate attendance and academic performance by team and provide a very quick snapshot, if you will, of student-athlete classroom responsibilities at any given timeframe. So we want to make sure that we, I wanted to acknowledge the work, given that, you know, we want to lift a culture of, of using data very quickly to inform and improve our practices. I'll reference a data point around our restorative practices. We know that we're trying to be very diligent in our laser-focused improvements around reducing the exclusionary practices from schools and create more restorative learning environments, and I am including some data points in the report, specifically the reduction in our in-school suspensions. We took a snapshot from this time this year, and we have had a reduction of 148 in-school suspensions aggregate throughout the district, and a decrease of 480 out-of-school suspensions, and also a decrease of about 50, yes, 50 expulsions. From 68, we have reduced 50, by 50 this year, and so, you know, we, we know that we still have a lot of work to do in those areas, but we want to make sure that we highlight the progress being made toward our efforts to reduce exclusionary practices. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item 4.3 is the student report. Our student representative was unable to join us this evening. Items 4.4 through 4.8 are the committee reports. In an effort to save time, we are not reading the committee reports at the meeting, but they are available online on board docs. But I will give the opportunity if any of the committee chairs would like to make any comments. Okay. Yes, Ms. Taylor?
So, Policy Committee actually, Policy Committee didn't meet last month, but we will meet this Thursday for anyone who's interested in attending. We'll talk about policies to review coming up and think about closing out the academic year with another sort of policy review and workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the business agenda, and item 5.1 is a resolution which will not require a vote. And I will read the resolution. Resolution of the Board of Education for Hartford Public Schools in recognition of Elizabeth Brad Noel. Whereas Elizabeth Brad Noel was resident of Hartford since 1964, and and whereas Ms. Noble began her career in Hartford as a shared-time classroom teacher at Rawson School, and whereas Ms. Noel went on to become a guidance counselor for 25 years at Weaver High School, most of those years as department chair, and whereas Ms. Noel became the first woman trustee of the Fox Foundation, helping to award scholarships to Hartford students. And whereas Ms. Noel, retiring in 1992, continued to serve the students of Hartford when she was elected to the first of four terms on the Hartford Board of Education. Whereas Ms. Noel created and hosted Brad's Be, an educational program aired on local public access television. And whereas Ms. Noel made a significant impact through her good works, advocacy, and consistent support for Hartford and its students, and mentored and guided and befriended thousands of young men and women during her years of service in the Hartford Public Schools and thereafter. And whereas the passing of Ms. Noel is a tremendous loss to the city of Hartford, to the Hartford Public Schools, and most especially, to thousands of young men and women whose lives she touched. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Hartford Board of Education hereby recognizes and gives thanks for the service of Elizabeth Brad Noel and declares she was an unparalleled inspiration and an example of good character, whose service to Hartford and its young people will long be remembered. Signed this 19th day of February in the year of 2019. Item 5.2 Administrative Appointment, Madam Superintendent.
We are actually going to table the item, given that Acting Principal Martin has been injured. She actually fell and broke her leg and required surgery over the weekend. And so we send her our very best.
Thank you. Item 5.3 Second Reading and Adoption of the Proposed 2019-2020 School Calendar. As you may recall, last month, we tabled the calendar because some of the board members had questions. It was referred to the committees. It went through our board committees. And so we now have a recommended action that the Board of Education accepts the second reading and adopts the proposed 2019-2020 school calendar. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Well, the ayes have it. The calendar is adopted. Excuse me. A consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to take up the consent agenda as one item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, we had a second, right there. All those in favor of taking up the consent agenda as one item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 And item seven is an executive session for the discussion of documents related to collective bargaining. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Okay, we would like to invite Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez, Attorney Julia Wilde, and the Director of Talent Management, Ms. Natasha Banks. And we are now in executive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are now in executive session.
Hello, I am your proud Superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process. But you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.